Good morning, good evening, Central community. Welcome to the Central Unified School Board meeting for February the 22nd. I am calling the meeting to order at 6:11. Attendance, we have Mr. Chan on the phone. Ms. Carrillo is not attending the meeting. Adoption of the agenda, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
First.
I got a motion by Ms. Brooks, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cervantes. Discussion on the motion. Here we none, calling it for a vote, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Oh, that's right, roll call vote. Sorry folks. Ms. Lopez, roll call vote.
Trustee Brooks?
Yes.
Trustee Cervantes?
Yeah.
Trustee Chan?
Yes, but I cannot hear Mrs. Lopez.
Thank you, trustee Chan.
Trustee Maling?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
And trustee Solis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Six oh, thank you.
Moving on to item D, comments from the public, do we have any comments holding?
At this time, it looks like we have no callers on the line.
All right, can you give me a 30-second clock?
Trustee Solis, we do have a 60-second delay, my apologies.
Thank you, can you start a 30-second clock?
Confirming, we have no public comments at this time.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll be going into closed session, thank you.
We can hear you. Test, test, one, two, three.
Is that what with that? Ask him if he can.
There's a little bit of like a ringing feedback.
Is there?
No. Um. Cause I heard it.
Test, test, one, two, three, how's that? It still sounds a little bit better.
Testing, testing, I was on mute. Testing, testing.
I mean, we can hear, we can hear you.
One, two, three. You can hear me, I can hear you, it sounds a lot better now.
Yeah, it sounds a little bit better.
Okay.
I think that will work.
Okay, alright.
Cool.
You can hear like a, like a storm.
You can hear like a, like a storm.
Good evening and thank you for joining us for the Board of Trustees meeting. At this time, they are still in closed session and we thank you for your patience. Once again, our trustees are still in closed session and we thank you for your patience.
We'd like to congratulate our basketball team for their victory tonight against Bullard. The final score was 65 to 61. Thank you for joining us today at the board of trustees meeting.
All righty, we're ready to reconvene from closed session. We're reconvening from closed session, the time is 7:41. Ms. Davis, do you want to report out?
Yes, thank you. On item, sorry about that, let's see, on agenda item E3, there was a motion by Mr. Cervantes, a second by Mr. Maling, and the vote was six zero with one absent.
Thank you. Moving on to item G, Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Maling.
Please stand and face the flag. Ready salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to H1, Student Recognition. Mr. Collegian?
Actually, I've got this item, my apologies on that. It is a great pleasure to introduce some students and thank you and you and your families for waiting for this. We are very happy to recognize our Spelling Bee winners. And as I call up your name, students, we would love for you to come up, and if your coach is here with you, they can come up as well. Thank you, our spell master Janet Weil, who is coming up, who oversees our Spelling Bee program. I'd like to introduce and celebrate our elementary school winners, Gavin Bajwa from Herndon-Barstow Elementary School. We'll do claps all at the end when we get them all up here, so thank you so much. And Coach Jamie Farias. And then Heaven Johnson from Polk Elementary, coaches Sandra Martin and Vicky Jimenez. These two students are our first and second, and I'm not sure, Ms. Weil, is our alternate here as well? Okay, and if our alternate can come up, and I'm going to grab the name in just a minute, I don't have that name in front of me, and I'm so sorry. Do you want to jump to the mic and introduce our alternate? Elementary.
Unfortunately, our elementary alternate is not here. Our middle school alternate is here.
Perfect, so we'll tag team, stay close to the microphone. For middle school, can Japleen Dillon from Rio Vista with Coach Cindy Alekian come up? And then in second, for our middle school speller, Verandee Romana from Glacier Point with Coach Tommy Martinez. And our alternate for middle school, I think, is Noemi?
The pronunciation is Noimi.
Noimi. And if those students will come up, all of these students in front of you will be going on to our Fresno County Spelling Competition, which is March 15th, and we wish you the best of luck and are incredibly proud of the time you put in, and your family probably quizzes you as well, to be able to compete at this level in the competition. So congratulations to you, this would be a great time for everybody to cheer for them. Thank you. And thank you, families who are in support of these students we just met. In addition, it is a great opportunity as well to recognize four Central seniors who were recently honored at the African-American Student Success Conference for their distinction. They were evaluated, all seniors around the valley, on multiple criteria, and we have four students who, based on their academic, athletic, extracurricular, and leadership, were identified and recognized for their accomplishments. For Central East High School, our advisor Carrie Crawford, thank you for your work, we want to recognize Nathan Darrett. Nathan, are you here? Okay, perfect, come on up, GPA 3.97, hasn't yet decided college. Carrie, you come on up too, thank you. And then Jada Rue, GPA 4.09, also here, looks like, come on up. College still undecided as well. And then from Central High School, advisor Robin Cardwell, we have Michaela B., and I think she had a conflict earlier, did Michaela make it? Okay, she's at a college event, so good spot for her to be in, GPA 3.71, college undecided. And then Cameron Owens, GPA 3.74, and he is busy right now, probably, celebrating the fact that they just beat Bullard in round two of the basketball. So Nathan and Jada, we're incredibly proud of you, we know you're going to go far, and it's our honor to recognize you. And Carrie, thank you for what you're doing and providing these programs, so come on up. And also to the families who are here supporting these students, as well as the two that could not make it, we're incredibly proud as well. Thank you.
All righty, H2, Employee Recognition. Mr. Collegian?
Thank you, President Solis. We are honored this evening to introduce the recipients of Central Unified's Employee of the Year Award recipients. These employees have joined us this evening to be recognized. However, unfortunately, the winner of the Classified Employee of the Year, Mr. Eddie Rodriguez, Community Liaison at Madison Elementary, was unable to join us, but we want to wish him congratulations for all of his efforts and being our nominee for Classified Employee of the Year this year. Certified Employee of the Year, please welcome Kathy Summer, sixth grade teacher at Riverbluff Elementary School. Round of applause, please, for, thank you Kathy. Come on down, thank you so much. Also, last but not least, our Administrative Employee of the Year, Mrs. Crystal Lanfranco, the Assistant Director of Transportation. I want to wish you congratulations to all, and we are so incredibly proud of you for your accomplishments, and we wish you best of luck at the next level, where each and every one of you will represent Central Unified in the county-level Employee of the Year next fall. How about one more round of applause?
H3, Employee Association Highlights, Ms. Martinez for CUDA.
Ms. Martinez, can you hear us? You're now live with the Board of Trustees.
Thank you, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Mr. Solis. Good evening, Board Trustees and Superintendents, and happy Tuesday to you all. I know you can't see me, but if you could, I'd be holding up the number two. CUDA is proud and excited to see so many winners in the house tonight. We would like to congratulate all of the Employee of the Year nominees and, of course, our winners. A very special shout-out to the Certified Employee of the Year Kathy Summer. She is not only an incredible person and educator, and so beyond deserving of this honor. Congratulations, Ms. Summer. Great job to our Spelling Bee winners and their coaches, and also to our seniors of distinction and their advisors. Great accomplishment, seniors, congratulations, one and all. Lastly, on tonight's agenda is the tentative agreement between CUDA and our district. It is important you know, board members, that 94% of our members voted yes to ratifying this tentative agreement. We had the highest turnout ever for a ratification vote, with 577 members voting. I hope this information is informative for you, and as always, thank you for your time, have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Martinez. Now, the President of SE, S, strike that, C-S-E-A, President?
Good evening, Mr. Solis and Board Members. Again, I'd like to congratulate all of the Employees of the Year nominees and the winners. Great job, it's a big accomplishment, you should be proud of yourselves. And I only have one item to report. CSCEA and the district came to a final agreement on a MOU for the Juneteenth federal holiday. All our 12-month, 11-half-month employees are very excited about that. So we just wanted to thank the district on behalf of classified employees. And thank you for your time and have a good evening.
Thank you. Moving on to item I, Superintendent's Communications.
Thank you, I've got a couple of things to continue in the celebrations. First off, our Justin Garza Cheer Champs, you may have seen on social media recently, competed in the 2022 National High School Cheerleading Championship and brought home their first, probably of many championships, so congratulations to them. They have been invited by the City of Fresno to receive a proclamation, as our Central East Cheer Athletes did as well, coming up this next month, so congratulations to the team and coaches. We are in playoffs, you just heard that we succeeded this evening in playoffs, and we'll advance to round three finals for the men's basketball team, and we want to wish our women's team good luck tomorrow night, as they play right back behind us in the gym. And then also, congratulations and good luck to our six wrestlers, who have advanced on to the state tournament, which is right around the corner in Bakersfield. Also want to share with you that the universal transitional kindergarten, community, town halls are happening tomorrow, February 23rd, at nine in the morning, for our families that are entering Central Unified and want to understand more about their options for preschool, transitional kindergarten, and kindergarten. The second one will be on Thursday, the 24th, at five in the evening, and we are advertising those on social media. This is a great opportunity, if you have friends with young family members, to let them know they can get more information, because registration opens March 1st, which is right around the corner. This evening as well, through Parents Square, our families received notification about changes from our Fresno County Public Health Department and California Department of Public Health regarding our contract tracing procedures, the quarantine, and the guidance that we follow. And so we will continue to advertise the information, essentially, as the hospitalization numbers go down in our valley. And in our state, we have been given the guidance to follow, that our contract tracing does not have to continue in the same form that it was before. And so for some families who may have somebody who is homesick, we want them to continue to stay homesick until they get better. However, if their siblings are not sick and have no symptoms, the guidance from the Health Department has stated that it is okay for them to return to school. And so we're really excited to have our students that can be in class be in class while their friends or family members get better. We are also expecting, and have heard in the news, and probably many have heard, that the Governor will be announcing very shortly something about masking in schools. We have not been privy to what that announcement will be yet. We will continue, as we have done in past, and with your support board, in following the guidelines of what the Health Department is alerting us to, to be the safe route. The expectation is that the Governor will share a recommendation, and the Health Department will quickly follow behind that, to give us some time to communicate out should there be a change in recommendation for masking in schools. But at this time, the adjustments for right now only apply to contract tracing and quarantine for students. Our testing center is still open, and will continue to be open for free testing as needed, and we will continue to recommend and offer vaccine clinics for all of those that can and are in need of a vaccine or booster. That was a lot, thank you for following along with that, but important announcements.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Item J, Comments from the Public. Do we have any calls holding?
President Solis, we do have a 48-second delay at this time. Would you like me to put 48 seconds as we wait for the delay?
Sure. Ms. Brooks, do we have any comments in the auditorium for comments from the public? Can you go ahead and call them?
First, Annabella Rivera.
My concern that I have is for my daughter and myself. I went to the district today, actually, for a concern about bullying. I'm not sure how, and I know Ms. Davis, I spoke to her today, I didn't like the result of what the bullying is. Right now, we are dealing with a really, really bad bullying towards Steinbeck Elementary, along with, for my daughter. It's been going on for like three to six months. Nothing has been done, to the point that my daughter is now being threatened, saying that she's going to die soon. I addressed the issue to the principal, at first it was the teachers' yard duties. She had wrote many, numerous, numerous letters to the school. I addressed it to the principal many times. To be honest, nothing had been done, the student is still in her classroom, and I was told today, after I literally filed a police report, because I'm very concerned, I don't sleep anymore, because I'm worried about her. Thinking that I'm going to get that phone call that that student hurt my daughter. Nothing was being done, and then when I did the police report, the police went to the school, they have said that they are going to, again, do another investigation for the fourth time, supposedly. My daughter came to me today, after I picked her up, and said that Ms. Lee have told her that... that the procedure they're going to do is for her to every recess, every lunch, for her to go to the teacher and the principal and address what the student had done to her, okay? Then they have told me, what the cop had told me, that the principal had said to her, to him, that I can remove her from the classroom, okay? Which is to me and her, that's a punishment to her. Because that's her friends are there. She's being bullied and now she's being punished to be being removed out of her classroom. Another suggestion was to remove her out of the school, okay? I don't think that's right. She's being bullied and she's being punished of being drawn away from her come from home. Another thing was that they have said that her, and I'm sorry if I took too long, but this is really, really important, that they're not gonna remove the child out of her classroom because they need her parents' consent. What is the fairness and what is, what is the district? I thought that the district was zero tolerance on bullying, and this has been going on for almost six months. It actually started out a little bit last year, towards the end of the school year. We are in February right now, and my daughter comes to me, comes to all of you guys, and nothing is being done. You can hear her out if you want, but when she tells me that she complains, oh, my stomach hurts, I know when she's lying, okay? To the point, I mean, she's a good student. And I'm not saying she's, you know, yeah, she has attitude once in a while, that's nothing, okay? But again, if you look at her record, she's really good students. She's athletic, she does cheer for the school, she does cheer for outside. She does get punished, she has attitude, she does everything. I'm not saying that she's perfect, but I am here, to all of you guys, to help me protect her. That's all I'm asking.
Okay, thank you for coming in, ma'am. Does your daughter want to say something?
She keeps on telling me that my mom is gonna die, and then she keeps on making fun of me because I don't have no dad.
All right.
And then one time, she kept, so we have zones where we're supposed to have like, we're supposed to stay on our zones. One time, I was at the playground, she came to my side and hit my foot and threw wood chips at me. And when I told the yardie, she didn't do anything about it.
All right, thank you. Will the area administrator for her area please contact the parent and the student, and then follow up with Ms. Davis? There'll be staff talking to you in a few minutes, ma'am. Thank you for coming in. Can you call the next person, Ms. Brooks?
Next person is Haven Gonzalez. Ms. Heaven?
That's who just spoke. That was the student that spoke.
All right, Ms. Lopez, do we have any calls holding?
There are no callers.
All right, then, thank you very much. Moving the agenda. Item K, Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Paul.
Second.
Second by Ms. Brooks. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Brooks?
Yes.
Trustee Cervantes?
Yes.
Trustee Chan?
Yes.
Trustee Mayling?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Solis? Motion passes, six oh.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez, can you call the next action item?
Before I announce the next item, if anyone is wishing to speak on any items that are on the agenda, please call five-five-nine-two-seven-six-three-one-five-zero. Again, the number to call is five-five-nine-two-seven-six-three-one-five-zero. Our first item is L1, Hold Public Hearing and Adopt Resolution Number Twenty-One slash Twenty-Two dash Thirty-Two, Approving Adjustments to the Boundaries of the District's Trustee Areas. Mr. McLean.
Thank you very much. So tonight, we have a final public hearing and discussion on the redistricting of the trustee areas. We've been going through this process over the last several months, and we've had some great community input. And now it is time to reach a decision. As we've talked about before, we have until the end of this month to approve a map by our board, which is next Monday. Recall at the last meeting, we had nine maps presented, and we narrowed that down to six final maps that we're looking at tonight. And all these maps have different features, but are all very good maps and meet the criteria and meet the requirements to be approved. If you recall, our current map is, has a twenty-one percent variance, the map that we are currently under from, that was established ten years ago. These maps all bring us down to a very low variance level, so they're all very good quality maps. Mr. Garcia and Mr. Sains from GeoNova, our consultant, are back with us tonight, both in person and on Zoom, to help us through this process, to answer any questions from the board, and to guide us to the finish line here. So we are hoping to pass a resolution tonight. And so at this time, President Solis, we do need to have a public hearing. So would you prefer to start with the public hearing to open and close that now, or would you like to discuss with the board first?
I'd like to open for the public hearing. Does Mr. Garcia have a presentation at this time?
We don't have a presentation, but we do have all the maps. And I'll ask Mr. Garcia just to come to the front of the room so that in the event there are questions, he can come to the podium and answer those questions.
All right, thank you. The public's hearing is now open. Do we have any people holding in the auditorium, Ms. Brooks? Can you go ahead and call them first?
Pedro Navarro Cruz.
Hello? There we go. Good evening, Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Pedro Navarro Cruz, and I'm here to support the Invest in Kids map, also known as Map One-O-eight-point-one. As a co-author of the map, I can assure you that this is the best of the six you have remaining. Not only does it meet the legal requirements, as do the rest of the maps, but it's also the map that best represents what the redistricting process is meant to be. Our map was created with community input from affected stakeholders by this decision. The student body at Central Unified is eighty-six-point-five minority population, so it's very important that your map prioritizes uplifting historically marginalized communities. Our map does exactly that while thoughtfully placing communities of interest in a trustee area-by-area basis. One of the main communities of interest we identified was Highway City and its need to keep that historically marginalized community whole. Only our map and Map C accomplishes that, which is why we would support Map C as a backup. All of the maps, with the exception of One-O-eight-point-one, cut through neighborhoods in a very inconsiderate manner. We do have major concerns about One-O-five-point-one as it would create two trustee areas where the white citizen voting age population would be forty-five percent or greater. This would be an unfair advantage to a demographic that only makes up twenty-one-point-five percent of the total population and thirteen-point-five percent of the student body. Central Unified families need a map that would move the youth forward for generations to come. This is why we ask you to adopt One-O-eight-point-one, Invest in Kids. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Can you call the next person, Ms. Brooks?
Yes. Next, we have Mark Quintez Felton.
Am I audible with a mask on?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Mark Quintos Felton, and I am here to advocate for the Invest in Kids map, also known as Map One-O-eight-point-one. I stand here as a product of the Central Unified School District. I attended Teague Elementary all throughout K through sixth grade, El Capitan Middle School for junior high school, and even Central High West Campus as a freshman. I personally worked on this map and its design. This map transforms how local communities are represented. I know personally how important this is. This map meets an ideal low-population deviation, two-point-six-seven percent, well below the ten percent threshold permitted by the courts. It establishes that the original core of the Highway City neighborhood in its fullness and entirety is represented together, keeping it intact unlike Map One-O-four. This is the map that least cuts through the neighborhoods. With the perspective of community of interest into consideration, we prefer to delicately place neighborhoods into districts with many attributes in common. As a backup plan, we support Maps One-Ten-point-one and C. The Invest in Kids map enriches the dignity of community residents regardless of their race, ethnicity, class, or social status. I can affirm that we made a conscious and dedicated effort to include voices from community members directly impacted and puts their vision not only at the forefront, but also for the next ten years. Make the right choice, Invest in Kids. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone in the auditorium now? All righty. We're gonna start taking our phone calls, remind the public out. People out in the community, our phone number is two-seven-six-three-one-five-zero. That's two-seven-six-three-one-five-zero. Could you please go to the first call holding, Ms. Lopez?
The first caller we have is Mr. Alex Martinez. He is a parent.
Go ahead, sir, you're with the board.
Hello?
Go ahead, Mr. Martinez, we can hear you.
My name is Alex Martinez, and I want to support Map One-O-four. I appreciate the community's support and engagement, and I thank for my area and the rural western part of the district. It keeps our area together.
Thank you, sir. Could we have the next phone call?
Good evening, Lamar Washington.
Hi, good evening, Board. My name is Lamar Washington. I have lived in the district for over eight years. I have two children at Philly Elementary. I wanted to share my support for Map One-O-four tonight, the Central Together map. This map is a big improvement on the current district lines. We have lots of community input from families across the district. We especially like how it keeps some of our neighborhoods and communities together that straddle the ninety-nine and the south side of the district. I strongly urge the board to vote on Map One-O-four. Central Together, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Could we have the next phone call, please?
Our next caller is Tina Wallace, parent.
Go ahead, ma'am, you're on with the board.
Good evening, Central Unified Board members. My name is Tina Wallace, and I am the proud parent of one FTP and one Garza. I am a Central graduate and take pride in the Barge Street. This redistricting process gives us community members a chance to raise our voice, and I wanted to speak up for Map One-O-four. I like how it keeps certain newer developments connected, as well as more established communities. It gives all a equal voice, and this is extremely important in a diverse district as such as ours, Central. I strongly urge the board to support Map One-O-four. Thank you again, Central Together.
Thank you, ma'am. Could we have the next phone call?
Our next caller is community resident Ariana. Good evening, you're on the phone with the Board of Trustees.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, thanks for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Ariana Marmalejo, and I am a community resident calling in support of the Invest in Kids map, Map One-O-eight. And I personally really love this map because, of course, it follows all state and federal laws, has a really low population deviation. But it's especially great because the Invest in Kids map was created by residents from all over Central Unified, who are the real experts, you know, what it's like to live and go to school in Central Unified. Another really important feature of this map is that it ensures that that Highway City is kept whole. This is a really important community of interest on all city, county, and higher levels of redistricting. And it's really, really critical that this community is kept whole, just like in the Invest in Kids map. And our map also cuts the least through neighborhoods and just really carefully place neighborhoods together with a lot of things they have in common that just make sense. So I think the Invest in Kids map is the best possible option for you to select tonight. And if you don't agree with that, then I think another great backup plan is Map C. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Could we have the next caller?
Our next caller is community member Antonio Jarkey. Hello, Antonio, you're on the phone with the Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Good evening, trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening regarding my support for the Invest in Kids map. I believe this map ensures that communities like Highway City remain intact and that the voting power of residents is uplifted. I feel like this map is ideal because with the insight and input from residents in our community, it allows for the lowest deviation, which is a big change from the map that was installed ten years ago. But please support the Invest in Kids map. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for calling. Do we have any other callers?
Yes, our next caller is LaPreet Carr, parent.
Hello, LaPreet. Hello? Hello?
Go ahead, we can hear you.
All right, thank you. Good evening, trustees. My name is Nabdi Carr, and I called in last time as well. My son goes to Polk Elementary. I just wanted to let you guys know that I support Map One-O-four, Central Together, and we really hope that you choose Map One-O-four, Central Together. So many of the community members are coming out in support of it. And yeah, I just wanted to make sure, you know, reiterate the same thing and just make sure that you guys heard the community's voice. So thank you very much, have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. Could we have the next phone call?
Our next call is from Jackie Garcia. She is also a parent. Hello, Jackie, you're on the phone with the Board of Trustees.
Hi. Hi, my name is Jackie Garcia. I am one of the authors of Map One-O-four, Central Together, and I wanted to share with the board some of the processes for this map. We are parents in a soccer league, so we also talked to more than eighty neighbors to get their opinions from across the district. This map really pays attention to the wishes of older neighborhoods, old neighborhoods, newer neighborhoods, and was really a multicultural and diverse community conversation. While I wish we got to talk to even more people, we are proud this is one of the largest conversations we've had and wanted to commend Central Unified for allowing this process. and wanted to commend Central Unified for allowing this process. Thank you again. And I'd just like to reemphasize that this is my second time calling and I'd like to thank the Board of Trustees for taking public opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Could we have the next caller?
That would conclude our calls at this time.
Alrighty, thank you. With that, I will conclude the public hearing and close the hearing and move the item onto the board. Mr. Garcia, do you have something to say?
I'm just trying to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Mr. Mayling.
Thank you. I wanted to thank the community for getting involved in making these maps. It wasn't easy and I know you guys put a lot of effort into it. I'm inclined to vote for 104, Central Together, as my number one and Plan C as my number two.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Mr. Paul?
Thank you. Based on what I remember from last meeting, all the maps meet the criteria. All of them represent an effective way to delineate the districts or the areas within the district. That's true, correct?
Yes, Board Member Paul, thank you. Yes, absolutely. And I'd like to thank Central Unified School District, Acting Superintendent Davis and Chairman Solis for this process. It's been a pleasure to be a part of it. We did create our three maps that were compliant with all regulations of communities of interest. They're very well balanced. They keep the core along the freeway. And as do all the community maps. All the maps are compliant and represent what I think would be a good representation for the board for the next 10 years.
Thank you. I'd also like to say that I'd support map 104 as well.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or statements? Hearing none. Oh, entertain them. Excuse me. Did someone have a question?
I'd like to make a comment.
Oh. Mr. Chan, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to sincerely appreciate all the community efforts in this process. Of course, the contracting team at Gionovo and district staff for creating such a robust process. I also, similar to some of the other trustees, would definitely give a preference to the community submitted maps and really appreciate the whole Central community and whole Central family for really getting involved in what will be, you know, an important decision affecting our next 10 years. So really want to thank everyone that participated. Whether your map gets selected or not, I can't, you know, help but express my sincere appreciation and gratitude for all that participated in this process.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. With that, I'll entertain a motion. If somebody wants a motion to approve one of the maps?
I move that we accept map of 104 as the new boundary map.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brooks. Discussion on the issue? Any discussion?
Excuse me, if we could just add to the motion that it would include the passing of the resolution as well, along with that map.
Okay. It will...
I'm fine with that modification.
Alrighty.
Board Chair. I'd like to make a comment. I just, again, like to thank the public. It seems to be pretty much of a toss-up of which map is actually received by the public, whatever their cause or belief is. So I want everybody to know that we have taken into great consideration everyone's opinion and everyone's opinion is valued and not taken for granted. Thank you.
With that, before I call the motion for a vote, I too would like to thank the public for weighing in on this item. You did some great maps. You need to give yourself a pat on the back. I've seen other school districts do this with very little input from the community, central community. You did a great job. You need to be proud of yourself. With that, could we have a roll call vote?
Trustee Brooks?
Yes.
Trustee Cervantes?
Yes.
Trustee Chan?
Yes.
Trustee Mayling?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Solis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Six oh.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez, could you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is L2, Approved Tentative Agreement Between Central Unified School District and Central Unified Teachers Association, Chapter 961. Mr. Collegian.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Thank you, President Solis and Board of Trustees. The attached tentative agreement has been reached in labor negotiations with the Central Unified Teachers Association and also ratified by 94%. The new three-year successive agreement will remain in effect through 2024. Financial impact is provided in the attachment. Administration is recommending approval of this item. Thank you and happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
I need a motion first. Okay, Ms. Brooks is making the motion. Is there a second?
So moved.
Mr. Paul is making a second. Roll call vote?
Trustee Brooks?
Yes.
Trustee Cervantes? Trustee Chan?
Yes.
Trustee Mayling?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Solis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Six oh.
Thank you. Could you call the next item, please?
Next item is L3, Accept Gifts to District. Mr. McLean.
Thank you. Tonight, we have one gift, which is at McKinley Elementary School. We received a donation of boxed lunches for the staff valued at $800 from Grand Canyon University. Would like to acknowledge and thank them for that gift and we recommend that the board accept the gift to the district.
Discussion on the item? Hearing none. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Mayling?
Second.
Who made the second? Mr. Cervantes? Or Mr. Paul? Okay. Roll call vote?
Trustee Brooks?
Yes.
Trustee Cervantes?
Yes.
Trustee Chan?
Yes.
Trustee Mayling?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Solis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Six oh.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Could you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is L4, Ratify Field Trips. Dr. Boatwright.
Good evening, Acting Superintendent Davis, President Solis, and members of the board. Requests for overnight field trips and day trips more than 150 miles must obtain board approval. This field trip was inadvertently left off the field trip request for possible winter sports playoffs that was board-approved on November the 9th. Administration is recommending this trip be ratified and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Cervantes?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brooks. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Brooks?
Yes.
Trustee Cervantes? Trustee Chan? Trustee Mayling?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Solis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Six oh.
Thank you. Could you call the next item?
The next item is information item M1. Receive information regarding 2022 ballot for CSBA Delegate Assembly. Acting Superintendent Davis.
Thank you. It is time for CSBA Delegate Assembly elections. Just as a reminder, delegates serve for a two-year term. Trustee Cervantes has just finished two years and Trustee Chan will begin his second year for us. You will see that there are three incumbents on this item with their information, biographical information attached. Each of these incumbents is seeking reelection and you are able to nominate and vote for up to three and you will see three attached for our subregions. So we do recommend this return to the next meeting for you to vote following your review of their information.
Alrighty, unless I hear any objections, I'll put this as an action item. Could you please call the next item, please?
Next item is M2. Receive information regarding the 2021-22 LCAP supplement. Acting Superintendent Davis.
Thank you. This item carries three very lengthy attachments and we are going to do our best to move as quickly as we can through some very important information. I would like to ask area administrator Dr. Boatwright and our supervisor of English learners and migrant services Esther Kircher to come up to join me. And while they're coming up and the presentation is going up, I'd also like to recognize by a wave Eric Wenrick, who put a lot of the data together, who is in our audience, and Annette Grigsby, who did a lot of writing for our plans. And so if you'd like to turn your attention towards the information, what we've tried to do in this presentation is to provide for you what is included in those two plans and highlight the key information. Steve, go ahead and move forward, please. What's included in the information and why we're bringing this to you is for a couple of reasons. There is a requirement, and it's going to sound funny. I didn't make it up. There's an update on the annual update to the LCAP. So you're used to us doing an update at the end of each school year when we bring revisions to our plans. Assembly Bill 130 requires, as we're continuing to receive funding, which we want to do, to also do a mid-year update, which is a great idea and that's what brings us here. Included in the update, we are receiving additional budget and funds and so Steve will take a minute during this presentation to show from our adopted budget and the additional dollars coming in, what that looks like for us. One of the attachments is also an opportunity for us to provide what's called a supplement to the LCAP. And this will end up in our local control plan at the end of the school year, but since it's mid-year, it's a separate plan and it explains how we will gladly take additional concentration grant add-on funds and support our students that are low-income English learner and foster youth. And it will talk about how to do that. And as a part of this process, it's an opportunity for us to share some mid-year information about how our students are doing. Steve, if you want to talk about the budget part first?
Thank you, Ms. Davis. So as Ms. Davis mentioned, that we want to show a comparison between the original budget overview for parents that was approved back in June with the adopted budget for the district and some of the changes that have taken place from that time into the second column, which is the second column is that based on the first interim budget, which was approved by the board back in December. And we'll talk just briefly about some of the differences. So first of all, the base grant, which is our base revenues for all students. Our student enrollment was down just a few students from our projection back in June. So you see a little bit of a downward adjustment as a result there. The next line is our supplemental and concentration grants. It provides funding for specific students that meet those criteria. Unduplicated pupils is how we refer to them in general. In this case, we did receive some additional concentration grants that were approved in the adopted budget. Those numbers weren't readily available in June, but they are currently and that will be discussed here in a few minutes in a later slide. The state funds, the local funds, and the federal funds, you'll see some significant changes that occurred between June and December and we talked about that with the board back in December. But for the most part, those are happening, those changes and increases are happening as a result of carryover funds, of mostly the federal COVID funds that were available back in the beginning of the year but were carried into this year for spending. And so you'll see a, pretty much an equal increase in the revenue side as well as the expenditure side at the bottom of the page. So when you total those numbers up, you can see we're starting at about $190 million of revenue and expenditure back in June in the first column and then in the second column, revenue expenditures were around the $270 million mark and that explains the differences there. Thank you.
And so as Steve just mentioned, we are in receipt of some additional concentration funds. And so one of the things we wanted to make sure we did, if you want to move to the next slide, Steve, was to make sure we could put a plan together based on community input, engagement that has been occurring throughout this school year about what's important to our families and how we might support and increase services to support our low-income English learner and foster youth. And so that is the supplement and it's due before the end of this month and we are on track to submit that. That is one of the items that's attached. It is a result of the 2021 Budget Act. It is intended, the funds are very specifically intended for direct services to schools that are over 55% of their population being these at-risk or high-risk students. I mentioned engagement as a part of where our plan came from. And when we look at the needs of our schools, you'll see listed Tier 1 schools and Tier 2 schools. In the past, some time ago, we had what was termed I schools. Schools that predominantly were serving populations that had students at risk and that's what you're seeing in this Tier 1 and 2 list. Tier 1 schools have over 90% of the population at risk and in need of support. Based on the definitions of this grant and funding source, they're low-income English learners and foster youth. And Tier 2 schools are between 80 and 89%. So we have students throughout the district that have needs. This is not the only plan we will talk about for service. This is one component. This supplement will help. We also have categorical funds that help to support students throughout our district, such as these. And then all of this will be woven into what we bring to you in the spring, in May, in our plans. Go ahead and move forward, please. And so we have to specifically identify some of the areas that these funds will be used. And so on this list, you will see there's really four different strands of support. The first item is with regard to our English learners. We propose in this plan to invest heavily with some direct service support to students at the Tier 1 and Tier 2 schools predominantly, with a newcomer instructor or teacher to support those students in their classrooms as they arrive into our schools. Their predominant support would be to the Tier 1 and Tier 2 schools. However, of course, if a newcomer arrived at a different campus, we would have that resource to help the student begin transitioning to our schools. And then also an EL teacher, an English learner teacher, to be added to the campus of each of the elementary schools that have these high population of need. The assumption and our work or our commitment is we have a large number of English learners at each of these campuses. Might we add additional supports to complement the work already being done in the classrooms and really accelerate the progress for students by adding on additional support for English learners? Talked to some of you about different models or ideas and plans that you've heard about and that is the work of Esther and team right now is to investigate how we could best utilize the resources that are in front of us. In addition, we know mental health services are needed and so we're trying to minimize the amount of shared staff between campuses and making sure psychologists are available and ready, intervention counselors, and then also looking at our online homeschool where we really have been operating with shared services and want to make sure we beef up the services of support for the families that are opting for the online homeschool. We also have a model that we... We also have a model that we've utilized and you have supported at Glacier Point and also Steinbeck where we have added an additional instructional leader on the campus to help the needs of those schools. And this funding is appropriate to do what has been discussed and brought up before and increase those services at Teague Elementary as well. And also the need for information and data. We have one individual that we've had in our district that does all of our student information systems work and then one who waved a few minutes ago who does all our academic work. And we're just getting too big for that. We need to be having readily accessible data to be using throughout the year and so this is an allowable part to the puzzle as well. And the bottom row is really thinking about our students who are on IEPs and how can we add services to make sure that they're getting the support on these campuses that were mentioned. We have, we've talked about the data, we've been looking at the data. If you want to keep moving, Steve. The, it is clear that we have work to do to support our students. There have been practices in the past that we have talked about and worked on training and we're really committing to some very specific actions as a district and sticking to those and monitoring and supporting those. We believe on-grade level instruction, additional time for mathematics, inclusion of English learners and students with disabilities into intervention, small group instruction in those primary grades. And sticking with designated ELD time for our students is critical for that plan and those individuals that were just mentioned to really show gains for our students and open up doors for them. And the way to do that is to have really high-functioning PLCs where teachers are working with the data in front of them, using that information and making changes instructionally based on that. Also shared over time with our team that we know this isn't going to take just one year to do. Steve, if you want to move forward. And that it isn't, to get to strong academics includes both social-emotional supports as well as the academic support in need. And we've been talking about the importance of college readiness as well. And so I want to take a look at the next chart and start off with college-ready and then I'm going to hand it over to my teammates right there. We've been working and talking to you about graduation rate and you've been talking to us about the importance of making sure more of our students are graduate-ready. And so this is the class of 2021 graduates. And it shows a few different things. It does show, if you look between 2020 and 21, that we do have a slight decline in how many students graduated when we were on school closure. We know that to be the case. What we also know is at our comprehensive high school, we did not see much of a change. Where we saw the drop was at our alternative campus. And so we put in some significant pieces to support that many of their students stayed on for a fifth year. They didn't finish during that year. But here's what it also shows. There are, is a red line and a yellow line. And we've been talking about our students that are on IEPs that often get placed in a certificate of completion rather than a diploma track. And we really recognized that we might be able to address the needs of students differently and get them on diploma track as an elementary student and middle school student. This work started two years ago. And what we see on the red line, you'll notice that our students with disabilities increased their graduation rate from 54% to 59.5%. Not only is that what we want to see more of, more of them getting diplomas and at higher and higher rates, but we used to be about 20% apart from Fresno County and we have reduced that to 8.6%. So our gap between how our students are doing and how they're doing in the Valley dramatically changed in the work that our schools are doing. In addition, that same group of students that now has diplomas means that yellow line, you'll notice, there's a dip in how many of them graduated with a certificate of completion. And a certificate of completion by the state means they didn't graduate. They did complete their coursework, but they didn't graduate. And so we're really pleased to see that more of our students have been moved into a diploma track and are achieving that diploma. Doesn't mean we're done. And so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Boatwright to talk about some of the steps we have in place to continue the progress.
Okay, so this is what is being done to improve graduation rate. We have added academic counseling at Pershing Continuation. Each high school is providing opportunities for students to recover credits throughout the school year through Edge Annuity, along with developed systems to monitor and provide early intervention to reduce Ds and Fs. Students with IEPs are receiving push-in services and targeted curriculum. We have professional development that's been provided and is continuing at several school sites to increase PLC effectiveness. And then as Mrs. Davis just mentioned, we have an increased number of sped students on track to receive a diploma now instead of a certificate of completion. Okay, so this slide is going to show our panorama data. One of the metrics on the blueprint that was just shared is regarding students' social-emotional learning. Returning from a year of school closure and distance learning means this information is more important for us than ever before. We are closely monitoring students' sense of belonging and teacher-student relationships and then making programmatic adjustments at both the site and the district level to ensure students' social-emotional learning needs are being met. This is information from the fall when the survey is first administered each year and we will be measuring this again at the end of the school year. So this next slide is showing our I-ready reading. When we look at data, it's important to look at multiple layers and data points. Academic progress is a key component of the blueprint. This is I-ready data for reading and contains information for first through eighth grade students. This chart and the next one, which will share I-ready math, provide a balcony-level or aerial view of this information. This data represents how students performed on this assessment from when they first returned from school closure to late fall and early winter. This does not reflect growth made by individual students who did not change performance bands. It only shows students who made enough progress to move to another performance level or stayed the same. The content of the assessment does become more difficult as the year progresses. Site leaders and teachers are focused on not only this balcony-level view, but most importantly, on individual students. Instructional programs and plans are designed based on the academic needs of individual students. This shares the type of, same information as the previous slide. Oh, go ahead to the next one. Yeah, there we go. But this is specifically for first through eighth grade students in math. Both the reading and math I-ready assessments will be administered again in the spring to measure student growth and evaluate next steps for learning. So these charts show NWEA MAP data for our ninth through 12th grade students in reading and math. This is the first time this assessment has been administered in the district. Ninth through 12th grade students at all high school campuses are taking this assessment this year. Since this was a new assessment for us, this chart shares a first look at how students performed in the fall. Students are finishing a second round of assessments just now. Once the second assessment is completed, we will be able to look at student academic growth from fall to winter. Just as with the I-ready data that I shared, this also provides that balcony-level or that aerial view. This is a good place for us to see progress regarding grade-level instruction. Site leaders and teachers are looking at individual student progress and making instructional decisions to meet student needs. What the I-ready and NWEA MAP data on these charts doesn't show us is how our special populations are doing. So I'd like to introduce you to Esther Kircher. She's our English learner and migrant services supervisor.
Good evening, President Solis, members of the board, Acting Superintendent Davis. The four columns in each box represent the four different language designations for students determined at the time they are initially enrolled in a California public school. IFEP, RFEP, EO, and EL. IFEP, or Initially Fluent English Proficient, are students whose primary language is a language other than English and were identified as having well-developed written and oral English skills based on the results of the state's initial language assessment. RFEPs, or Reclassified Fluent English Proficient, are students who were initially identified as English learners and they have acquired the English skills necessary to perform in comparison to their English-only peers and have achieved proficiency in the state's annual English language assessment. EOs, or English-only, are native English speakers whose primary language is English. EO students make up the majority of our student enrollment. Els, or English learners, are students whose primary language is noted as a language other than English on the home language survey at the time of enrollment. These students are designated EL based on the results of the state's initial English language assessment. Els are unable to communicate fluently or learn effectively in English. Therefore, all English learners are required to receive additional English language support during the instructional school day by means of integrated and designated English language development. Currently, we have approximately 14% or 2,287 English learners enrolled in Central Unified. This progress data for K8 depicts that our IFEP and RFEP groups outperform our English-only and English learner groups in both I-reading and math assessments. The progress data for grades nine through 12 indicates that our IFEP and RFEP student populations also perform higher than our English-only and English learner subgroups. Reclassification is the goal for all English learners. It is the goal for our district to reclassify English learners within five years of initial identification. Reclassification is dependent on accurate identification of our English learners and the commitment to effective instruction in both integrated and designated ELD. Designated ELD is a 30-minute protected block of daily instruction where students receive critical English language support at their proficiency level to help them be successful in school subjects. To increase the number of students meeting reclassification, frequent monitoring of designated ELD is done throughout the district, providing site feedback, immediate site feedback, with opportunities for professional development. Els are included in reading and math interventions with language supports. Professional development is provided to elementary and secondary sites focusing on key instructional strategies, including scaffolding language supports to meet the needs of various-level learners. Professional learnings have been developed and executed for our new teachers and interns on various research-based practices proven most effective for multilingual learners. And number five, there are many benefits to being multilingual. With our rich cultural backgrounds and vast language groups that make up Central, we want to continue to celebrate the diversity while promoting English proficiency that better prepare students for post-secondary education.
So we reopened the reading labs this year and we also added math labs. During the fall semester, 1,360 students were served in the elementary and middle school reading labs. One of our commitments with the academic blueprint was to ensure that our English learner students were included in interventions. And you can see that 30% of the students served in the reading labs during the first semester were our EL students. 153 of the students served, total students served, were exited based on specific academic criteria. 35% of the students served in reading labs improved their I-ready reading score from fall to winter. Knowing that the assessment becomes more difficult each time it is administered, we were happy with this progress. Reading lab staff are monitoring individual student progress and adjusting as needed to ensure students continue to improve their reading ability. So in addition, nine out of 14 of our math labs were open during the first semester. These had a slower start due to the need for staff to substitute teach in classrooms. All math labs will be fully functioning though this semester. Our district math instructional coaches have been instrumental in supporting this work. And then I'm very excited for you to see this video. We can't take you to the reading labs tonight, although I do invite you to visit our reading labs. I know that Mrs. Davis would be very happy to escort you at school sites. Please enjoy seeing our students in action and learning.
I love my job. I love the reading lab. I love working with kids. I love light bulbs coming on. We are trying to get the kids to get up to where they can master grade-level standards. And so a lot of them just need a little bit of support. And so we are trying to build their capacity to acquire all that information and to be able to take it and apply it in their classrooms. So it's critically important that we catch them early, we catch them back up and allow them to be able to be successful in the classroom.
This item that, thank you first off for you guys presenting and for you all listening. This is a mid-year snapshot. We will be back in the spring with the data that we're collecting now to report on and to continue to report on progress. I'm very proud that amidst what has been a very hectic fall, as was mentioned, our folks in the math lab had to help out in various areas. We continue to pull back in on why we're here, to educate kids and to really monitor the progress and make adjustments where we're seeing the progress not be as significant and to learn from those that are having more significant progress. So this item fulfills certainly the report out that allows us to submit for concentration funds that we want to utilize for our students. And we'd like to answer any questions that you have from either team or myself.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Mr. Cervantes?
No questions but comment. I just want to applaud the staff and administration for this great work. This information is so important and critical and I applaud you for this and the corrective actions that are being taken. This is really, really exciting and I wish we spend more time talking about this over the course of our agenda. And I'm very grateful. Thank you. Especially for all those students that are severely at risk and they're getting a lot of attention and I believe it's going to pay dividends. And again, I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have two. Ms. Boatwright, is it true that intervention teachers are being pulled as substitutes?
That was during the first semester and during the Omicron surge. And it was really mostly just those staff that we had hired for the math labs. The labs had not been fully put together yet and so they were not fully functioning. There were some teachers though that were pulled to substitute in classrooms as needed.
Okay. What was the impact on the students?
Well, they weren't receiving as much extra support, you know, during that math lab time.
Well, they weren't receiving as much extra support, you know, during that math lab time. And we did have periods of time there where the, even though the math lab was not fully functioning, that the staff that were hired to run the labs were pushing into classrooms and providing support for students. So it wasn't as structured and cohesive as our reading labs. But we are working on that now, and we, like I said, we do expect them to be fully functioning this semester.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know if my next statement is a statement or a question. I've been informed that at the ELAC committees at the junior high schools that the I-ready data is either A, not being given to the parents attending, or B, not being explained in a manner that they understand. I think you need to redouble your efforts and explain to the parents how that data affects their students.
Thank you for that information. We'll be sure that we reiterate our information for all student data at our upcoming ELAC meetings, ensuring that translations are readily available and questions are answered as needed.
All right. Thank you. With that, could you call the next item? Thank you. Hello?
May I ask a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Chan, go ahead. You have a question?
No problem. If I could ask, I had heard from some of our intervention teachers who had, I had spoken to prior to this, that many of them were being pulled to substitute. And I just wanted to ask, how has that had an impact on our children in terms of not being able to, you know, provide them sort of their primary purpose?
Yes, that's correct. So some of our reading lab teachers were pulled to substitute in classrooms as needed. They were pulled as a last resort. All other available staff were pulled first because we know that our students do need that intervention. That has just about ended at this point in time, however. And so our labs are fully functioning.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any more questions from the board? Hearing none, since this was an information item only, could you please call the next item, Ms. Lopez?
The next item on the agenda is L3, Receive Informa, I'm sorry, M3, Receive Information Regarding SB 328 Late Start, Mr. Garrett and Dr. Boatright.
As they're coming up, there was an error on my part. Mr. Perez is also, thank you. Good you're coming up.
The more the merrier. Come on down.
All right. Good evening once again. So SB 328 requires secondary schools to move their start times later in the morning next year. Middle schools must start no later than eight o'clock AM, and high schools must start no earlier than eight-thirty AM. Elementary, middle, and high school schedules have been reviewed with stakeholders for potential impact. To be prepared for fall 2022 implementation of new bell schedules, change has been processed with staff, students, and community in order to build schedules that best meet the academic and co-curricular needs of our students. We are bringing forward tonight proposed bell schedules for information. So at the start of this work, we did outline some parameters for these bell schedule discussions. We did bring this to you before as information, but just as a quick recap. So we wanted to make sure that we're maximizing academic options and, of course, meeting those instructional minute requirements. We also know that we have to work within our existing infrastructure for transportation, food services, all of our operational capacities as much as possible. We also need to provide visual and performing arts, sports, academic event schedules that are accessible to all of our students. And then lastly, we also are aiming to minimize disruptions to families and communities as much as possible. So this is just a quick recap of our community involvement and our feedback. So we did hold three town hall meetings back in November. We also had the Community Thought Exchange, which ran for about two weeks, also in November. We added the SB 328 information page under Public Information on our district webpage. We met with department leads in December. We met with the District Leadership Team, or DLT, on January the twelfth. We presented to District English Learner Advisory Committee, or DLEC, on January thirteenth. And then lastly, we presented to the District Advisory Committee, or the DAC, on January twenty-fifth.
Good evening. The left side of the slide contains our current bell schedules for elementary, middle, and high school. And on the right-hand side of the slide is provided information on schedule options. As SB 328 stipulates, the earliest start time for middle school and high school is eight AM and eight-thirty AM respectively. And you'll note that that is reflected as both schedules meet the Senate Bill criteria. Included are three options for elementary. Please note that with each that included with each bell schedule listed are the earliest projected route times associated with transportation for both before and after the school day. On this slide, you will see included to the, as you saw, similar information to the previous slide at the top in regards to start times and the earliest transportation route times. But also included are the anticipated range of times that transportation would be delivering students to sites in the morning. In reviewing two elementary options, Option A and Option B, impacts listed include morning pickup times, morning supervision, afternoon delays, and number of buses used. Costs for Option A have an additional, included additional need of buses or drivers as potential costs. And Option B does not have that same cost included. Yet you will see there is a difference in the morning route times and in the range of times that students would be dropped off at sites in the morning.
Good evening. One of the areas we anticipated to be impacted because of AB 328 was our athletics and visual and performing arts. Thanks to the research and planning from our district and site athletic directors, feedback from our community stakeholder meetings, and the bids and staff, we were able to identify impacts, solutions, and costs to our, for our community and district. Some of the impacts we identified were practice schedules, shared transportation and facility use, daylight saving standards, limits in the ability to transport students within our fleet, affects evening, during, and after-school day. Some solutions we came up with were add lights to the fields, add upgrade facilities, and utilize charter buses. The approximate cost to CHS facility upgrades is approximately three hundred thousand. Central High School East High School facility upgrades lights is approximately one million four hundred. And charter bus cost estimated is forty thousand. Moving along with the financial impacts of late start, we were able to outline the two options and estimate the cost breakdown each would present in the areas. As you can see in the slide, we have both options side by side with the funding source alongside. For instance, additional buses, Option A, three hundred and fifty thousand to one million four hundred. The Option B would be no cost, and funding source would be the general fund. For additional drivers, estimated cost one hundred thousand, three hundred thousand. Option B, no cost, funding source, general fund. For increased AM supervision, you'll see Option A has no cost. Option B is twenty thousand, funding source, general fund. For the facilities upgrade and lighting we spoke about, it would be one million seven hundred thousand for Option A, one million seven hundred thousand for Option B, funding source, Essor. And for the charter buses for athletic and VAPA events, estimated cost forty thousand. Option B, forty thousand, funding source, LCFF.
So after assessing all of the feedback, impacts, costs, and ensuring that we meet both the criteria for instructional minutes as well as Senate Bill 328, administration is recommending Option A. This would include a start time of eight-thirty AM for the high school, as required by Senate Bill 328. Eight-twenty start time for middle schools, which meets the requirements of Senate Bill 328, and a seven-fifty AM start time for elementary schools. The positive impacts of this recommendation include initial routes in the morning being later and eliminates the PM route delays for elementary. Costs are covered by multiple resources, and our times do closely align with our neighboring districts. Administration is recommending this item be placed on the March eighth Agenda for Action, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sarah. Questions from the board? Hearing none, I have one or two of my own. If I understand you're defining charter buses as buses just for sport, sports events?
So looking at some of the needs within our, the usage of our buses within our fleets and wanting to maintain our visual and performing arts, the buses that we could utilize would be to contract with charter companies. We do that for field trips and other things, and that would be what that is referring to, yes.
All right. Thank you. Depending on what schedule we pick out, a lot of the older children in the community take care of the younger ones. And now there could be a conflict in that time. If that happens, are there any plans to mitigate that by increasing the after-school programs in the elementary schools? If so, what have you looked and found?
Absolutely.
Yes, absolutely. We're looking at that now, working with our county office and also our local campus connection program. As we see the need, as our parents are expressing that need, then we will be increasing programs.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Sivantes?
I got a financial question. It looks like, obviously, Option A is a little bit more costly to the district. I'm just kind of curious why your recommendation would be A over the B, based on finances?
So when we're looking at A versus B and looking at the start times as well as what those start times and the impact that that would have on morning bus routes and transportation, there is a difference when you look at Option A and B for not only the time that that earliest route would take place for the start of the school day, but also the time range in which those buses would deliver those students to the sites. And so in looking at an option that would have the least amount of impact in regards to an earlier time, that was the reason for that recommendation.
Thank you.
If I could also add just a couple of things to both of your questions. We are receiving additional funds to expand our after-school program, as Dr. Boatright mentioned. And so we're going to already expand and not wait for the requests of our families, but be ready should our numbers get too high, as Dr. Boatright was mentioning. Be ready to add more, and we're excited that we have funding to do that. And so all of our elementary campuses have after-school programs. That was one of the things we heard in input was that, and actually from our students that were giving input, is they're the ones that watch their siblings. And so they were a little bit worried about that. And I'm excited that we have some partner funding that will cover expansion in how many kids can be in the program, as well as the flexibility. Some of you may have had your own students involved or your own children involved in after-school program to know you have to go five days, you have to stay until a certain hour. And the funding we have gives some flexibility to that. So for the kids that just need to go for a few hours for tutoring and support, there's some flexibility there. In addition, if I can add, Mr. Sivantes, to the question you asked, the main input we got in all of the engagement and that Crystal, I see our Administrator of the Year in the back there, was working on was parents don't want their kids on the bus too early in the morning. And we know that question has come up. And they want us to figure out how to alleviate these delays in the afternoon that are occurring. And the recognition is the only way we can do that is to add some buses to our fleet.
And that item about increasing buses is going to be coming back at a later time? Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, unless there's objections, I'll place this on as an action item on our next agenda. Thank you very much. Could you please call the next item?
Item N4, Receive Information Regarding the 2021-2022 Second Interim Budget Report, Mr. McLean.
Thank you. So as you know, it's that time of year that we bring the second interim report, which reports financials as of January thirty-first. This is just an info item tonight to let you know that this item will be coming to the next board meeting for action. And Ms. Bolderas will be providing a presentation. We'll have the full second interim report at that time to provide to the board. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and place this as an action item on the next agenda. Can you please call the next item?
The next item on the agenda is M5, Receive Information Regarding the 2023-2025 Calendars for the Central Unified School District, Mr. Collegian.
Thank you very much. Attached for your review are the proposed calendars for the 2023 to 2025 school years. The calendars were created through collaboration with CUTA and CSCE and include instructional days for students, duty days for certificated employees, and a list of holidays that will be observed. The attached calendars have no significant changes to previous calendars in terms of holidays, identifying one week of vacation for employees during the Thanksgiving break, three weeks over winter break, and again, two weeks over spring break. For those holidays will be observed. Administration is recommending this item be placed on the next agenda for action. Happy to answer any questions the board may have. Thank you again.
Questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and place this on the consent agenda for the next agenda. Can you call the next item, please?
Next item is M6, Receive Information Regarding District Dress Code Policy, Mr. Garrett.
Good evening again. Each February, the Board of Trustees review the district dress code outlined in Board Policy and Administrative Regulations 5132. As is done annually, principals, in January, we crest feedback from students, parents, and staff regarding the current dress code. This feedback was collected via Parents Square, emails, phone calls, or in-person. This process also includes providing our community with the board meeting dates when the item would be presented for information and for action. All input that was received was included in the documents provided to the board for review. Recommended updates have been made to the administrative regulation and include replacing the kindergarten, grade kindergarten with transitional kindergarten, language on how the appropriate length of shorts and skirts is identified, language regarding the perceived intent of why a item of clothing may be worn, and language was removed addressing bib overalls. Administration is recommending this item be placed on the March eighth Agenda for Action, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and place this item on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Could you call the next item, please?
Next item on the agenda is M7, Receive Information Regarding Field Trips, Dr. Boatright.
Good evening once more. Requests for overnight field trips and day trips more than one hundred and fifty miles must obtain board approval. The following field trip requests are attached. Administration is recommending this item be placed on the March eighth Board Agenda for Action. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll place this on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Can you please call the next item?
Next item is M8, Receive Information Regarding Purchase of Technology Devices to Support Student Learning, Mr. Martinez.
Good evening, Board President, Board members, Acting Superintendent Davis. The current technology devices that The current technology devices that our students in grades TK through 2 are outdated and are needed for replacement. This is a regular cycle that we do with all of our student devices. At the end of their lifespan, we review the devices with our technology committee and select a device based on their input. The district has selected a device with, I apologize here, 4,120 Chromebook devices at approximately $2,451,727.61. Administration is asking that this place be placed on the next board item for action. And I am available for any questions as needed.
Thank you, sir. Any questions by the board?
I've got one question. It's kind of a two-part. I'm not very tech savvy, so forgive me. Could you explain the pilot process on picking this unit? And what is a PCC? What does that do?
So the PCC is a district technology committee that's been put together, put together based off of stakeholders that are, represent each school site, and that's including teachers and administrators. What we do typically is take a popular devices that are used at other school, school districts, review that with the PCC, gain their input on which devices we want to test in a classroom environment, and then we purchase a small set of pilot devices, so that may be anywhere from 20 to 30 devices of each technology device. So for example, an iPad and a Chromebook. Then we pass those devices around through the school sites with, in the classroom, allow the students to use them and get the input again from those stakeholders that are part of that committee. From there, based on their input, the Technology Services Department takes the device that's been decided on and then does a, basically a bidding process to make sure that we're getting the best pricing, best service, best support for the device that the committee has decided to continue with.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? What's the pleasure of the board? Would you like this as a consent or an action? Consent? All right, I'll place it as a consent.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Could you please call the next item?
The last item for information is M9, receive information regarding application for exemption from the required expenditures for classroom compensation. Mr. McLean.
Thank you. So this is a application of our exemption based on an ed code that's been around for a long time. The district has to do a calculation each year on how much funds are spent on classroom compensation as compared to the, all the general fund expenditures with just a few exceptions. And this, this is looking back to last fiscal year, 2021, and based on the numbers, we, the requirement of meeting a 55% threshold, we fell below that by a few percent. We were at 51.8%, and this generally has happened to districts across the state due to the increase in COVID funds. Those COVID funds go into the denominator of this calculation, which causes a change in the percentage that normally wouldn't occur. So there is a exemption process that is used by districts when this occurs, and so we've attached the required information for the county office to give us an exemption from this ed code calculation, and I would be happy to answer any questions on this.
Thank you, sir. Questions from the board? I have one. So what you're saying is the exemption of the items that you aren't reporting are the items that were covered by COVID funds?
What I'm saying is because of the, the way the calculation works, when, when the other funds, other than compensation increase, for example, Chromebooks, as we, as you know, the board approved the purchase of the Chromebooks last year for the grades 3 through 12. Those types of expenditures and PPE, personal protective equipment, and other COVID expenditures changes the calculation in a way that reduces the percentage, and that's what happened in last year.
So is there a requirement that the items purchased were purchased with COVID funds?
That's not part of the requirement. It's just a calculation that's done at the end of the year to reflect how monies were used.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. Can you call the next item? It's advanced planning.
Will this be coming for action or for consent?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Consent.
Thank you.
As far as advanced planning, our calendar is attached. If I can just draw your attention and make a plea to you, we'll be reaching out for any of you that want to read. March 1st, we have Read Across America, or that week, next week, and in the next few, you might be hearing from schools. The resolution was passed tonight on the consent agenda, and it's noted on that advanced planning calendar as well. We'd love to connect you to schools if you would like to read.
Item O, additional information or closing comments? Seeing none. The next scheduled meeting is March 8th at 6:00. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Mayling. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Paul. Roll call vote?
Trustee Brooks?
Yes.
Trustee Servantes?
Yes.
Trustee Chan?
Yes.
Trustee Mayling?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Solis?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you all for being here. Mr. Chan, I hope you feel better, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.